Here.
Heben.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Move to excuse Councilwoman Echol.
Second.
Move to excuse Councilwoman Tenny.
Second.
All those in favor of excusing Mrs. Echol, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
You want to go now?
Move to excuse Councilwoman Tenny.
Second.
All those in favor of excusing Mrs. Tenny, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the March 24th, 2025 regular council meeting?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes for March 24th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the April 14th, 2025 regular council meeting?
I need to add facilities minutes.
Okay.
Second.
You making the motion to accept it as amended?
Yes, that is a motion.
Okay. Who said second?
I did, sir.
All those in favor of accepting the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, we have a presentation from Edge and Tetra Tech.
Mayor McKinnon and Council, thanks for having me. My name's Jack McDonough. I'm a landscape architect with Edge, we're just across the river in downtown Toledo. We've been working on a number of projects with the city of Rossford and Allison has been a great partner to work with. It's been about four or five years since we started working in Rossford and we've done a number of vision plans and projects that have actually come to fruition or on the verge of coming to fruition. The Pocket Park that is happening downtown, we're very excited to see groundbreaking on that project. And so, at some point, I think it was about a year and a half ago or so, some preliminary drawings had started with the city and Tetra Tech to get started looking at the roundabout at Glendale. And so, we were brought in to take a look at some of the aesthetics and how we could incorporate some safety measures and things like that within the roundabout area and outside. We took the time to walk through the plans and talk about some great things, the destination that it would create for downtown. It looked like a great point of kind of motivation for the future of what downtown Rossford could be. But, from our standpoint, we took a look at the roundabout. We posed a question, you know, this is great, this would help the businesses around it, would help children get to school with safer crossing mechanisms and things like that, all those great things that roundabouts bring, but there's a number of things that it also brings. We had reducing to one lane of traffic coming into it and exiting it. And what would that cause, I guess, for beyond that? You know, we had worked with Allison at a couple of gateway points at the north end, just beyond the Hollywood Casino, and then at the south end, crossing the creek, which is a bridge construction project that is happening. We had, like I said, worked on the Pocket Park, Edward Ford Memorial, there were some stepping stones, right, but we didn't have the connection. We didn't, so, we didn't have the answers for what that would look like for the businesses in between. And, in many of the communities that we've worked with in streetscape projects, we've done just about every municipality within the Lucas County area, Oregon, Sylvania, Perrysburg, not Mami, downtown Toledo, in many neighborhoods in Toledo, and many of them start with this vision. It's a, something we're starting on because the powers that be that help communities like Rossford and the Perrysburgs get funding outside of the funds that they can provide are typically from the state or from a federal program. And many times, they want to see what the vision is, not necessarily for that project, how's it going to affect other things within the community? And so, we worked with Allison and Todd and Tetra Tech's team to take a look beyond the roundabout, because we believe that once you start a project like the roundabout, which is such an important piece to downtown, the momentum that it creates from a funding standpoint is very important. And, we've seen in many communities, it just starts to tack on from this project to the next project. And, although our current economy is, could be very confusing right now, I will say that in projects that we are working on currently in Toledo that are upwards of $50 million of work that are going to happen, it was a bipartisan thing that was started by Donald Trump in his first term, carried over by Biden to continue the funds and continue the planning for the project, and again, is being endorsed by Donald Trump. So, those are the types of things that we see the city of Rossford potentially gaining some momentum on. So, without further ado, I'm going to have Allison walk us through and I'll kind of talk over it a little bit, maybe we can do this a couple of times, but this is, we are working our way from the south to the north end of the Superior Corridor. So that was the Eagle Point Roundabout, which is kind of in a planning phase right now with Tetra Tech moving through Osborne Street, which is a traditional intersection. And this is where we get into some of the improvements in reaction to the roundabout. So, improved crosswalks, we've looked at this idea of incorporating a central connector, pedestrian connection, so there'd be parallel parking on both sides of the road, and you would connect through multiple sidewalks along that corridor. This is spinning around the roundabout a little bit here to give you an idea of how that could look from all different angles, and we'll continue down the corridor. And we'll hit each one of these crossroads, Walnut, Maple Elm. And you can see in this concept, and I should have probably gotten out ahead of this a little bit, I should really emphasize that this is a vision. This is not necessarily the answer, this isn't something that you would be handing over to ODOT to fund immediately, this is something that would be vetted throughout the community, through city staff, and through consultants to really fine tune these types of things. And we've turned our way around and we're actually looking south now towards town at the gateway that we had worked on previously before connecting all these dots. So, it just gives you an idea of what the potential is. It's not necessarily the answer right now, but it is that graphic communicator that anybody can take a look at, no matter if you're a resident, if city staff, or a federal employee taking a look at this from a transportation standpoint. You can, you can understand that there is a goal in place here to improve the corridor, and there is at least a vision. And so, this is something that they will see and say, okay, Rossford is taking the next step here, how can we help them?
Okay, thanks everybody for having us here. We were here last time, my name's Andy Langendurfer, I work for Tetra Tech. And, I know last time we were here, Austin and I went through an elaborate presentation of about roundabouts, all the safety features, you know, all the great things that come with roundabouts. We didn't want to go through those again today, everybody went through, had a chance to look at those last time, but we just wanted to bring up kind of the summary slide, and we have a few other things to talk about. Austin's going to talk a little bit about some of the parking near the roundabout. But, as we mentioned last time, the great thing with the roundabouts is they check all the boxes. The reason why they're so successful and why we're seeing such an uptick, you know, all across the country, every community's looking at roundabouts is because they check the box for safety, traffic calming, they're great near schools, we've got tons of testimonials and, you know, all across the country, they're near schools of, you know, varying types of schools, from intermediate schools all the way up to the university, elementary schools, high schools. We looked at this intersection through traffic operations and our modeling, this was the best operational level service, the lowest delays. We talked about the aesthetics, Jack did a great job talking about the gateway and how this creates a destination feel, all the things that it builds upon through the entire corridor. We're going to talk a little bit more about some improved parking plan for the corridor when Austin gets up. Talk about destination and then economic benefits. We, the last council meeting, I did a presentation that talked about, you know, we talk about safety and level of service, but the economic benefits that communities see, they see an increase in tax revenue because people feel more comfortable being able to interact, park, walk across the street. So, so there's all those, you know, the tangibles with the safety, but there's the intangibles with the economic benefits. So, thanks again for having us here, I'll turn it over to Austin, and Austin, talk a little bit about parking.
All right, so yeah, you can skip down through just safety metrics. Okay, so, I know parking's a big deal, obviously, with this roundabout. So, as part of this roundabout, what would the impact of parking would be? So, what it would end up doing is, on the south side of Glenwood, it would eliminate nine spots, on the north side of Glenwood, it would eliminate five spots, I'm sorry, six spots. So you have a total of 15 spots that would be eliminated. As we discussed in our public works meeting last week with Councilman Owen, it was a vision of, okay, as Jack just showed, that's a concept of what the 65 corridor could look like and how we could improve parking, whether that be parallel on the inside and outside or angled parking along the corridor. So, with the understanding of the vision to add a significant net gain in parking throughout the corridor, the question was, how could we incorporate some of that parking in the immediate to facilitate the lost spots that are being impacted by the roundabout? So, this was kind of a concept that we started putting together for the south side, in between Osborne and in between Glenwood. So, on the east side in front of the school, what we looked at is reducing or changing some of those parallel parking options to angled parking. To, the impact of that would be is one of two things, either one, we could extend the southern limit of our project a little bit further south for striping essentially of new parking stalls, or we could do it through a, we could put bollards, or we could put flexible cones, or we could put something in there temporarily just to see how that traffic flow goes before we do something more permanent. And as we talked last, or a couple of weeks ago, is with the whole vision of the 65 corridor, it's a question of, how much do we want to do now versus how much do we want to wait with the understanding that this entire area is going to be improved? So what we did is, if we want to make sure that we facilitate or accommodate those lost spots, we could change some of those parallel parking to angled parking. It would push that single lane a little bit further south toward Osborne, but we'd still have plenty of space for vehicles to be able to kind of come out of that S curve and then be able to taper into the inside lane or shift into the inside lane to allow for those angled spots. So, number of spots in front of the school, there's currently 27 spaces. If this design were to go forward, we could increase that by four, it would come up to 31. And then in front of Mo's, in front of, not so much Danny's, but in front of Mo's, kind of in between Bacon and Bergen, we could get back the exact number of spots, we're actually losing a few spots up there, you can kind of tell, in front of Danny's, but we could get back all 12 of those spots and have a net, basically net zero impact to the south side of the roundabout and actually incorporate more spots in front of the school area. So, this is a concept of what we could do, it would be very minimal in terms of additional money to do it, it's just striping. So this could be definitely something we could accomplish to accommodate those lost spots on the south side. So going to the north side of the roundabout between Glenwood and Walnut. So, in the area in front of, I guess, in between Glenwood and Walnut, there's, basically end up losing four spots. There's two spots that will remain just south of Walnut, but because of the proximity to the roundabout, we could not get additional spots beyond that. However, if you look up at the top right of the screen, you can see that basically in the area in front of the old bank, we could get back a number of those, a number of those spots. So you can kind of see the net loss in front of the bail bonds in between Glenwood and Walnut, you end up losing four spots. We could gain a couple of spots to the area on the other side of the road. But, again, these are just concepts, there's a lot of different ways we could get additional parking, you know, extending the southern leg or extending the northern leg further to a single lane operation of traffic flow, we could get in a lot more spots, a lot more angled parking. And we'd, I'd even looked at a graphic in between Walnut, a little bit further to the north, if we were to extend that northern leg beyond that point, all of those parallel spots, we could actually go from 11 spots to 21 spots in that area. So, there's a lot of ways that we can increase the amount of parking, even with this project, but it is more of kind of an understanding of, we are looking at the entire corridor in a way to incorporate additional parking for the entire 65 corridor. So, again, I know parking's a big thing, so when we met at the public works meeting a couple of weeks ago, we really wanted to look into, how could we accommodate those lost spots with this roundabout project? So, we could definitely do that and we could end up with a net gain, especially on the south side of the roundabout.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have...
Go ahead.
The safety chiefs now would like to speak, please.
Okay.
And at each councilperson's desk, they should have a copy of this letter from the safety chiefs, and I think...
Todd and Rick, do you just want to come up to the podium?
So, thank you, Allison and Mayor and Council, but I brought Officer Jody with me because she deals with the traffic out here on a daily basis when school's in session. And, excuse me, it is pretty much a mess out there the way it is now. If you noticed in the rendering, there was the speed table, which would go right here, which would also slow traffic, but the whole going down to one lane, especially the inbound traffic coming from Toledo, would be slowed down a lot, just from going to one lane and then going through the roundabout. So, I can bring Jody up here real quick. Like I said, she has to deal with the traffic, we have an officer out there for probably, what, 45 minutes total, once in the morning, once in the afternoon to help with traffic. And it does, the red and blue lights slow people down, but there are times when, if our officers are on calls somewhere else in the city, they can't get out there. So, if you have anything to add.
And I agree, like, I like the single lane, I think that's going to slow the traffic down, the roundabouts are going to be slowing things down. My big concern is the pedestrian traffic, you guys that have all lived here in the city all your life have seen the children that run across the street, and their parents say, "Come over here and have them run across the street." So I think the whole concept of what they're looking at right now is going to slow everything down and make the whole downtown area, not just the school area, more pedestrian safe for people to walk around through there. And we talked at our last meeting about the speed tables again, and they're not, if you're not familiar with the speed table, they're not speed humps, so you're still moving. And putting those within the crosswalks of the roundabouts would also slow them down, flashing lights, we talked about. So I really, I really like the design that they've come up with.
Hi Mayor, Council, citizens. My name is Rick Soroka, I'm the fire chief here. I just want to share our opinion from the, from the fire side. I've been doing some research on this, and some of it is the shared mission, and saving lives and preventing serious injuries are the highest priority of both first responders and highway agencies. Roundabouts are safer intersections that result in fewer severe crashes requiring emergency response. Safer intersections are important for first responder, occupational safety and health too. Studies show that most fatalities resulting from a crash involving a fire truck occur at or are related to an intersection. Further, angle crashes are the most common fatal crash type involving fire trucks. So with this, like the chief mentioned, lowering the speed, we aren't going to have those type of accidents, those type of head-on accidents or those T-bones. I think it's going to help keep our employees, our members safe, as well as help the community as a whole.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Mayor, thank you, councilmembers, citizens, my hometown. Hey, I've got just a couple of notes, I will be brief. I am a huge proponent of the roundabouts, I love them. Our very first roundabout in Wood County was, you probably, anyone in here know where the first, maybe than Rex does. Other than Rex, does anyone know? It was on Route 18 in North Baltimore, right around 2005, 2006, around the time the intermodal was done, 2005, is that correct? 2005?
Yeah, 2011, but I was pointing, I was the one that...
Okay, so I'm, that was the first one, oh my goodness, how's this going to work? Are people going to figure it out? And it took a little bit of a learning curve. The one that I was also, I was personally very involved with was Rocheston and 199. Two reasons, one, when Perrysburg schools let out, Rocheston Road would literally be backed up from the west all the way to I-75 coming over the overpass, and it would be that way for a long period of time when it was a stop on Rocheston and 199 was straight away. And we had at least one fatal or very, very serious crash at that intersection every year. Every year, it'd be at least one fatal crash or multiple serious injury crashes. Since that roundabout has been put in, I am not aware of any injury crashes at that, let alone a fatal crash. And now, the most cars I've seen backed up on Rocheston Road when the school lets out is five or six. So, that's nothing compared to what it was, it beautifully flows through. When Buck and Lime City, you all remember that by Penta, I had people calling me, "Sheriff, why are you for this roundabout? It's terrible, what a waste of money, we don't need it, and it's going to back up, you know, it should be a traffic light," you know, they had all these reasons why it should not be there. I want to throw a beautiful statistic at all of you, and this is a sign that I confirm with Todd to make sure that this is still an accurate statistic. Before you put in a roundabout, 85% of the people around that area are going to be against the roundabout. After you put in the roundabout, 85% of the people believe it's the best thing that was ever done. And Buck and Lime City is a perfect example. I've gone back to some of those people that were really upset with me that I was not coming out against this, that I was for this roundabout, and they said, "Yeah, you're right Sheriff, it works really nice." And McDonald's, I'm with the owner of the McDonald's there, he said, "I'm going to lose business, people are not going to be able to come into our restaurant, they're not going to be able to figure out how to go to McDonald's." I'm not seeing, having anyone having trouble getting into McDonald's on Buck Road, he said, "It's going to put me out of business." It did not put the McDonald's out of business, it actually smoothed it down, it's beautiful. I just went through that intersection on my way here, there was a lot of traffic, it beautifully flowed through there. The only thing I didn't like about your video is it still showed one traffic light on here. What I think would be so beautiful, and we talked about this in another meeting I was at, if picture, coming from Perrysburg and going through Rossford, you've already got the roundabout at Lime City and Colony and 65, put another roundabout here at Eagle Point, put a, wanted to like to have at BGSU, the flashing lights for pedestrians to be able to cross, and then of course, the roundabout at Glenwood and Dixie Highway, another one by the factory, you could just beautifully meander through town without a single traffic light. I just think that would really be nice, especially with the one lane going through. We also discussed, we don't want to be a Mami, but they have, how many times more traffic going through Mami than Rossford does? More than, yes, double the amount of traffic. So, it's really would be nice aesthetically to have all the green space. So, as your sheriff, which one of my duties under Section 31107, the very first thing says to preserve the peace, what a great way to preserve the peace by decreasing crashes, making it safer for the citizens of Wood County. So, I strongly encourage you all to vote for the roundabout at Glenwood and Dixie Highway, that's our first step, right? Is that, that's what we're here about, okay, very good. I'm like, let's do the whole thing, but anyway, those would be other discussions. So, thank you all, any questions? I apologize, I've got another meeting I have to go to, is there anything else? Anything, okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you Sheriff.
Thanks Sheriff.
Rex and Todd, is there anything you guys wanted to add?
I could, I'll just reemphasize what Jack and Andy said. So, basically, the roundabout at Bergen and Superior is one that we want to move forward. What Jack showed is what the downtown could be, and as the sheriff indicated, if you did transform the downtown, like a lot of small towns in Indiana that were communities, industrial communities like Rossford, or now Beddy Communities, where everybody is in a walkable downtown, that's what it could be. But bottom line, the intersection that we're talking about is, again, is a safety concern, is a resource de pleader, and it would be the first, if the city continues to decide to redevelop the downtown, restore the north end industrial access and segregate that from the, from the, you know, from the walkable, I guess you'd call it a, actually, keep the industrial area to the north end of town and then the walkability between Eagle Point and the north end of town. The other concern with this project is that this is coming out of general revenue, your general revenue fund is mostly going to be paid for by a TMAC congestion mitigation air quality grant and the residual funds, which are only for public infrastructure, are TIF funds, because it does allow the fire department to service the rest of the city, so we can use the TIF funds to complete the construction of it. So, no money is going to come out of other streets, it's not going to take away from other projects, it's intended for what the proposed use is going to be.
Thank you Todd. Rex?
Yeah, I've just got a couple of points, I think you probably hear me from here. First, you know, I think that all these things, and many of you have heard this from me before, whether it's water sewer lines, roads, all these things, they're systems, they're not isolated to Rossford. So you think of this stretch of highway that we've been talking about here for the last half hour or so, it's part of a larger system. It's a state highway, it's your city street, but it's a part of a large system. So, you have to keep that in mind when you're thinking about your project, that it is part of a greater thing. The other thing that intrigues me about this is, we've struggled here in Rossford for 45 or more years I've been here with a vision. We always come up, we got to do something with downtown. First of all, we had trouble years ago just even describing what downtown is, right? But, we've got a decision now, a description, really, the focus has been from Eagle Point to Libbey Owens Ford, that's the part the Port Authority paid for the study for the transportation through there. I'm really excited that we have a strong vision, and I hope it doesn't end with building a roundabout. I hope you keep using your imagination to how we can repurpose this area and make this something of a more vibrant community. It's all there, we just have to use our imagination to make that happen.
Thank you so much. Allison, is that it? Okay, committee reports, facilities, parks and marina.
Okay. The Facilities, Parks and Marina Committee met Thursday, March 27th, 2025 at 3:00 PM. In attendance were Allison Murray, Todd Odette, Todd Kitzler, Rachel Tenny, Bob Toth and Brenna Reynolds. Since we have not talked about this roundabout nearly enough tonight, I'll update you on that first. The project rundown for roundabout at Glenwood and Route 65. Mr. Odette and Administrator Murray presented information about the potential benefits of strategic infrastructure development such as the proposed roundabout at the intersection of Glenwood and Route 65. Roundabouts contribute to economic development as they facilitate transportation and improve access and walkability. They are also traffic calming measures that slow vehicles without causing additional delay and improve safety for vehicles and pedestrians. A traffic study determined that the intersection needed to be improved and that the current traffic movement is already similar to that of a roundabout and would not impact nearby housing to the extent that a traditional intersection would. Depending on how parking is redesigned, the city can expect a net increase of at least 30 spots. The project would be funded in part by a grant from TMAC, and the remainder can be supplemented with TIF funds which are designated for infrastructure projects. Denial of grants can have an adverse effect on consideration for future opportunities, and doing so would likely reduce grant funding for other improvements. Overall, studies on other roundabouts in similar locations, including school zones, show myriad safety and economic benefits. We then discuss the Pocket Park, construction is progressing smoothly and the project is expected to be completed prior to the first stroll of streets. At Indian Hills, the building does not meet current standards and is not suitable for rehabilitation. Bidding for demolition will open in the next few weeks, and then the city can begin planning for future utilization according to the guidelines based on the historic nature of the site. The hotels on Clark Sign has been, the sign design has been approved and bidding for the project is scheduled to open in April. At the fire station Sleeping Quarters remodel, construction is progressing and is expected to be finished soon. The Public Works moved to Wales Road, bidding construction will begin soon and will greatly increase available space for Public Works equipment, materials and vehicles. The pedestrian hybrid beacons on Superior Street and Dixie Highway, the project is moving ahead and the beacons are expected to be installed over the summer. And among other business, Councilmember Reynolds received communication from a resident about totlot concerns. Administrator Murray referenced potential plans for street development and other city projects and suggested coordinating park improvements with that construction. Councilmember Reynolds suggested addressing immediate concerns first and then conducting a review of the city's totlots to ensure that they are safe and enjoyable for residents. Meeting adjourned at 3:57 PM.
Okay, any comments or questions? All right. All right, reports of the mayor and administrator. Allison, do you have anything this evening?
Just very quickly, city offices will be closed this Friday, April 18, in observance of Good Friday. And next Monday, brush pickup will begin. You can visit the city's website to see the daily schedule for street-by-street pickup.
Okay. At our next meeting, it's one you shouldn't miss. About two weeks ago, Allison did a state of the city for the Rossford Business Association, and I've asked her to do it at the next council meeting. It'll give a complete rundown and a description of where we were, where we are, and where we're going. Mr. Watchell, any correspondence?
I have several pieces of correspondence, Mayor. First is a memo to Officer Jody Johnson from Chief Kitzler. Officer Johnson, congratulations on being awarded a LEAD Ohio Instructor of the Year at your annual conference on March 31st, 2025, in Atlantic City, New Jersey. This award recognizes your outstanding efforts in implementing the LEED program, benefiting our community and state in an exemplary fashion. Your willingness to teach other officers how to bring this program to children is a testament to your dedication to your profession. Thank you, and keep up the outstanding work.
Officer Johnson, will you stand up for us? Congratulations.
Next is a memo to Detective Perez and Officer Sebastian from Lieutenant Revelle. On April 1st, 2025, a citizen called police and reported that someone had just entered their house through the back door in an apparent burglary in progress. The citizen was home alone with her two grandchildren. Thankfully, the suspect fled the residence when he observed the victim. Due to your quick response to assist the citizen, you were able to get to the area and locate the suspect before he was able to escape. Then, your investigation revealed the suspect had also attempted to break into another home in the area. This is another great example of your dedication to keeping the citizens of Rossford safe. Thank you for what you do. And since the Chief Kitzler and Chief Soroka and Officer Johnson spoke about the roundabout, you all have a copy of their letter that was signed by all of them. And then, finally, I believe at the last meeting, we did one of, a motion to authorize the transfer of a permit for QuickTrip. We have a request from Homebuy, is that what it is, Homebuy? Which is going into the old big lots. They're requesting the same thing, a transfer of a permit, since there's none available here. I believe it's a C2 permit, which is beer and wine in sealed containers for carryout only. I just need a motion to authorize Allison to sign the application.
Who would make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the motion to allow Allison to approve the application, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it, Mayor.
Okay, introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read Ordinance 2025-19 by title only?
No, move. Second.
All right, bear with me. I lost a piece of paper someplace. There it is. All those in favor of the motion to read by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2025-19 is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the purpose of constructing a modern single-lane roundabout at the intersection of State Route 65, Glenwood Road, and Bergen Street, and declaring an emergency. This is the third reading.
Motion to declare Ordinance 2025-19 an emergency measure?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2025-19. Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read Ordinance 2025-26 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2025-26 is an ordinance amending supplemental number seven, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025, passed by Ordinance 2024-79. This is the first reading.
Allison?
This is actually.
Chris?
Thank you. So, just a few things that we are adding to the budget here this evening. The first item is the payment to block for the cameras here around town. The second item is we are adding funds to our accrued compensation fund to account for the sick vacation and personal time payout for the former Public Works Superintendent. And the third item is wages and fringe benefits for a newly hired office manager down at the recreation center. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the move. Go ahead.
Move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-26. Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read Ordinance 2025-27 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2025-27 is an ordinance approving the purchase of sodium chloride rock salt under the agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the winter contract 018-26, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Allison?
This is our annual salt contract that allows Daryl to go out and purchase the salt for next winter.
Move to suspend the second and third reading of this ordinance.
Second.
Is anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No?
All those in favor of declaring, suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare 2025-27 an emergency measure?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-27. Obadorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read Ordinance 2025-28 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2025-28 is an ordinance repealing Section 139.02 of the Rossford Municipal Code and enacting a new Rossford Municipal Code, Section 139.02, full-time fire department established and declaring that emergency. This is the first reading.
Allison?
This would allow for the hiring of four additional full-time firefighters, taking the number from eight full-time to twelve full-time.
Finance Committee did review this, and based on the delta of the amount of money it would cost versus part-time, fundamentally, it's insurance and retirement fees that we agree that this is the right decision to ensure we continue to have fully covered shifts.
I'll move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare Ordinance 2025-28 an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-28. Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read Ordinance 2025-29 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2025-29 is an ordinance amending Rossford Municipal Code, Section 137.12, composition, and declaring that emergency. This is the first reading.
Allison?
This would allow for the hiring of a full-time interdiction officer within the police department.
Again, Finance Committee did review this, and based on, and safety as well, and based on the amount of funds that have been seized just in 2025, makes this a break even for about four years if nothing else happened today. So, we are pretty vehemently in favor of moving this forward.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to suspend with the second and third reading. Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare 2025-29 an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption. Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-29. Owen?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Introduction of resolutions. Is there a motion to read Resolution 2025-06 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2025-06 is a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contract for winter salt contract 018-26, and declaring that an emergency. This is the first reading.
Allison?
This resolution allows us to participate in the state program for purchasing the 750 ton of rock salt, so that we will get the best price.
Move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare Resolution 2025-06 an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt or a resolution 2025-06. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay, council remarks. Councilman Toth?
I'd like to offer my congratulations to Officer Jody. Thank you for your wonderful work in keeping all of our children safe. Chief Kitzler, please send our thanks to Detective Perez and Officer Sebastian. I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe Easter and a happy and safe Dingus Day.
Councilman Obadorf?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Toby LaDissman and his staff for doing a fantastic job of organizing a very successful Easter egg hunt. I'd like to congratulate the fire chief, the chief of police, and their subordinates for the letter that was so well-composed, dealing with the safety factor and the pedestrian movement. I think it meant a lot in this particular night and the vote the way that went. And Jody, I've worked with you a thousand years, and you just continue a career dedicated to the people of this community. I thank you.
Councilman Owen?
Couple items. One, strong start to the ESSL soccer season, highlighted by Patrick Plus One by Cole Yenrick in the U8 Rossford soccer game. Secondly, I want to reiterate Todd's point regarding TIF money with regards to the $1.6 million that is Rossford's portion, city portion. It is not prioritizing a roundabout before your surface streets, because we cannot use that money for fixing Harbor Point or something of that nature. Secondly, it also doesn't mean that there isn't additional funding that could be made available in the next year or so. So, it's not something that we took lightly to just spend money.
Councilman Heben?
I echo everyone's thoughts. Going fourth or fifth always leaves me with nothing to say. But thank you all for the presentation today on the roundabout. I'm so happy that you came out. It did make a difference and a great work.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Well, ditto. Congratulations, Officer Jody. That is fantastic. We are so grateful for you. Chief Kitzler, please tell the officers thank you for their work. That was incredibly brave. Thank you to Toby and the rec team for putting on an Easter egg hunt. They were able to raffle off 21 baskets, which is just fantastic. And happy Easter, happy Passover, and let's get this roundabout going.
All right. Are there any audience remarks?
Jeff, that one's 177, Hanum. Allison, I sent you an email requesting autistic child signs on Hanum. Did you see it?
I did.
Have you given it any thought?
Yep, we can get those put up.
Okay. Because the electronic sign is working. The only question I have is why does it blackout at 35 miles an hour?
So that it doesn't encourage people to try to get the speed up to 60 or 70, which people would probably just watch the number.
But if they hit 35 and it blacks out at 36, they're going faster than 10 miles over the speed limit.
It still records the speed, but there's a science to why that blacks out, and it prevents people from.
Because personally, I have, there's a couple of my neighbors that travel that route quite often and are quite often speeding, and the sign is blacking out. I'd really like to be able to tell and come back and report to you who it is and how fast it's going. Because considering, I don't know if Allison shared with you, the email that I sent her about the autistic child, somewhat missing. We had patrol officers show up, the drone was deployed, and luckily, we found him in quick time. Need him to slow it down. Summer's getting here. Those kids are in the street. There's six or seven of them that are in the street all the time. He has no sense of danger or where he's at, you know, his boundaries. So, I mean.
I spoke to his grandparents, who he lives with, and they're in favor of the sign.
Okay, because I spoke to her before I brought that to Allison's attention. I didn't want to step on her toes or anything like that. So, hopefully, we can get him down. We can get travel. And then, I think, what did we mention? The humps, but they're not really a speed bump. Can we, what are they?
Speed tables.
Speed tables. Can we get those installed on Hanum at some point?
Could look at it. It's usually put in when you redo a road, so the next time Hanum is redone.
Well, that road's not going to get finished, I mean, get done again. But, yeah, but it would be some idea, because they come down our pretails. The other thing is, when is yard waste starting? Yard waste pickup?
Monday.
For the homeowners? No, yard waste pickup for the homeowners?
With waste management.
Yeah, when is that starting? I thought it should have been started already.
Yeah, it should already have started already.
Oh, because I haven't seen, but I haven't seen any cans out or any trucks. I'm not real sure.
I can double-check. It should have started at the beginning of April.
Okay, all right. And the other thing is, there's a lot of lights throughout the city, Glenwood Road, Buck Road, South Compass Drive. Are they being addressed? I mean, some of those areas are kind of dark at night.
Those are Edison lights, so the city can't take care of those, and we can only report them so many times.
Okay, are the reports in?
Yes, there are.
Trouble tickets in?
Yes, there are.
All right, thank you. What about the one, South Compass? Are those Edison's?
Yeah.
There's actually heads missing off of those, some of those out there, those fancy ones.
They're working on it.
That's how you know they addressed it, because they came and come and take them down.
What's that?
That's how you know they addressed it, because they come and take it down. They did it in front of my house when I.
They took the head off? And then, okay, so.
The streetlight.
I mean, I didn't know how it came up missing, you know, because the other ones are out, and that one's missing, so, yeah.
I watched Edison do it. They came out in front of my house, and instead of fixing it, they took it down.
All right, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Move.